Okay. You have a form, six apart.
Recording. On time right now. Go ahead and start.
We've been buttoned up at the top and it won't go away.
Hi, James.
That was his car.
I can share, yeah.
Two of my friends are the closer relatives that had COVID and got COVID and so.
It's on the uptake again.
This is a noose, a no, that's strange.
He's trying to get on the mic.
And mine came on automatically since I came in here. I don't know if it's gonna tell me.
Who's that?
No, I think that's a chopping. Do you know the password? Great. Do you know the password? No, I'm on.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't understand what the password you picked up on my computer does. You keep a lock, all that stuff.
All part. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I guess I don't beat them, my camera.
Oh, sixty nine.
I have no cases today.
Did we have seven thirty or was it either?
No, I have to, I have to.
Okay. Glad to have you here. And.
We have a forum.
We have a forum, we're all good here. So I'd like to call to order the regular hybrid meeting of the Woodstock planning board for August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Forum, we have the minutes from July twentieth. If everybody's okay, make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Good. Under communications and announcements, we have a request for an extension from FAM acres and we have them on the agenda, so we'll get to that. We have the CSAC documents from P. Jackson received and that's regarding the. Historical society. We're gonna do some additions to our building. We have an email from Stuart regarding the Woodstock National. And we have a lead agency request from Delaware County for the planning of watershed affairs, which is basically. The D.C. is going to buy a lot of land all around.
D.C. or New York?
It would be the D.E.P., I guess. Yeah, and so they want to be the lead agency, which is quite fine. And we have Volunteers' Day on twenty twenty-three.
Which is Saturday.
Which is Saturday, August nineteenth.
And I just, I had sent you guys, there was a letter from Ms. Surowitz and I left it off on accident, so I just wanted to mention that regarding Woodstock National.
Okay, we have two public hearings and four or five sketch plan reviews and a couple of extensions request. So the first public hearing is Timothy Keith from Adye Keith, Barrow Airbanks, S.U.P. twenty-three dash zero six seven five. That's a public hearing for a special use permit application to operate a campsite located in the R.A. zoning district on Het Shil Road in Shady. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Keith, well, this is pretty straightforward. Bring you in here for this, but is there anybody in the audience for this case? Were there any calls?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Tim, I mean, we know what it is, you want to put a single campsite, it's permitted, and you had to bring you in here to have a public hearing to give you an S.U.P.
We made it simple.
Yeah, it is, it's one ten and a hundred acres, I think you're okay.
The application before the last, last one.
Don't get too noisy.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go camping.
Bye-bye. Hey, Mark, we'll talk, you're done with that. I know, right? I know. Okay, yes, I'll put this here. Same here. Bye, thank you, everybody.
Motion to open the public hearing, or do we need to close that public hearing?
No, he did, Peter did it all.
Motion to open the public hearing for Paul S. Goodwin, W.W.E. twenty-three zero two three, weapons and water course permits to build a unit.
Second?
Right. He seconded it.
I haven't seen him in a couple of years.
All right, we're open for the public hearing.
Okay, so long. So I have to make a motion, open a public hearing?
Judy just did.
Okay.
She ain't wasting any time.
She got a take sheet.
Are there any people here in the public for this case? Were there any calls?
I have one file request, but no comments.
All right, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
On favor? Okay, so this is a case of pedestrian bridge. I did the site visit, as we said before, it's approved by the D.E.C. They approved it engineering drawings, which I did. So if you guys want to just briefly tell the board they already know what your, what your plans are.
Yeah, it's a proposed ten-foot wide, eighty-foot long truss pedestrian bridge to access the two structures out on the far side of the stream. It's really the only reasonable access that's for that, for this parcel. There is a, a three-foot wide bridge directly off of McCalla through a right-of-way, which is really not conducive to getting any building materials or supplies across there. And then both structures need to be renovated, so.
I don't need to bring them the map up for anyone?
No, you seem to approve the application pending, we already closed it, so now that's the last piece.
This is, and to what kind of grade you bring this bridge, you can bring construction trucks across this bridge.
It's not a vehicle bridge, it's a pedestrian bridge. Right, right. Eighty feet long to get it outside of the floodway. We started with a shorter bridge, but we moved it outside the floodway, which makes it eighty feet long.
Why ten feet wide? She said, why ten feet wide?
It's, it's a reasonable width to be able to get like an ATV or a golf court or something like that across it. And they're, and getting building materials, most likely, most of the building materials will have to go across via an ATV and a trailer. So there'd be the material behind it, so we wanted to have plenty of width for that.
So what's the rating in the bridge?
Their rating, maximum rating is ten thousand pounds. So it will hold a substantial amount of building material, yes.
Any other questions on the board? As I said, I did the site visit and it's, it goes from a nice high bank to a bank from, clears the stream and is D.E.C. approved. So. Without any further ado, I'm going to say, can we make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
All right.
Well, thank you, Bill and Bridge.
Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll email you both tomorrow.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you for coming prepared to my, my class.
Make sure you help.
Take care.
Melissa, is there any reason why I shouldn't just delete these when we approve them?
No, you absolutely can. Scott, you're up next.
Okay. We have some sketch plan reviews. The first one is Jackson Lane LLC, special use permit number twenty-three dash zero two-two eight E.
Yes.
This is the second sketch plan review, the site plan review application for modifications from existing site plan with exterior constructions within the H.C. zoning district located at fifty-two Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. And the rep is Scott and for everybody, this is Pearl Moon, basically.
And the C.D.C. has already looked at it and approved what they asked for.
So want to tell the board again?
Yeah, the, the improvements that we want to make are the addition of two pergolas, one on our upper patio, one on the lower patio. An entry vest, they'll, a menu kiosk. Near the public sidewalk and a fire feature.
And a what?
A fire feature.
Explain the feature.
Yeah, okay, let me explain what happened with the C.D.C.
C.C.D.
Yeah. I think, I, we just aren't prepared enough to give them enough information on it, so they dropped that. And they said, basically, we just revisit it in the future, so they did not approve that.
Fire feature.
Yeah. It's not their fireplace, and that was.
I thought they approved one but not the other. I thought they approved one but not the other.
The only question of, they, to me, when I got, when I read, everything was approved that he presented except, and it wasn't denied, it was just to revisit later.
Yes, that's.
There was a question about how, there was a question about how far the pergola, how close the pergola comes to the existing building and we asked if it gets pulled back a bit.
Oh, you're on.
Right.
That's good.
Good, that's very good.
So we could, in, in on the resolution, we can just say, future impending fire feature needs to be seen by C.C.D. for agreement. How's that sound?
Because you didn't want to build the fire, the fire feature right now.
There's no point bringing back the one feature we need to do it.
We were advised to put like everything on our wish list.
Okay.
On this, and we just aren't prepared.
Does anybody want to see the drawings? Because I can bring them up if you want to see them.
I've always seen them, yeah.
I love that.
Yeah, I believe Braden was the site up there, yeah. So I don't think you need to go back there.
We didn't need to go because everybody can.
Do we have any information?
Do.
We do.
So this is, this is just a site plan review, it's an update to his current site plan review, do we need a public hearing? Your call.
It's an update to, to an existing site plan, so it's not really a sketch plan at this point.
Well, he, this has already been a case within, it has nothing to do with sketch plan, it's just, this is, he's updating his site plan. It's a modification to his existing site, so your call.
Well, I don't see that it affects any of the neighbors. Do you, Braden, man, see that having a public hearing is gonna make any effect? It's really just up to.
Unless they have outdoor music and that's a different question.
So we can wait for the review and I can have a resolution prepared for our next meeting? We have to make a motion. Judy or Peter?
Move, we approve, but it says here, it's a sketch plan review, so I'm not sure what I'm saying.
Just any meeting that they come to talk to you about their plans is called the sketch plan review, it's just make the motion to wait for the review for Jackson Lane.
We wait for their review on S.P.R. twenty-three zero two-two eight E, Jackson Lane for the Pearl Moon Restaurant.
Pending draft resolution to be drafted at next meeting.
Okay.
Second?
I second it.
Question. Where does this affect what the C.C.D.'s done at all, if it does? Well, it's. C.C.D., C.C.D. did not approve one of this, correct?
They approved everything but the, but the barbit.
Yeah, I understand.
They didn't reject it, they just said that they were.
Further review.
Yeah.
So do you have to go back to them?
Yeah, I would, it would have to, in the future, I'd have to go back to them.
Okay, so that's why the draft resolution that we created.
So we're not superseding the C.C.D.?
No, absolutely not. It will be a condition in that, that they go back to C.C.D. for fire. Okay, everybody, aye?
Aye.
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 Scott will talk.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
I don't know why I think it's a long time ago, just take them off the map, it's there for, and I don't have to ask you.
Hi, Karina and Iver.
Hi.
The next.
We can't be there in person, and I think, as you know, our, our son got married today up here in Boston, so we're doing this by Zoom.
Okay, the next case, sketch plan review is Iver Alfrede and Karina Kayak, which is the sketch plan review of a special use permit application to modify an S.U.P. Zero four dash zero three four nine, the remedy of violation for home renovations within the R-five zoning district located at ninety-five Carmody Lane in Shady. So Iver, you want to tell the board what your.
Yes, there, there are two things that we believe need to be remedied. The prior owners painted that, there's a house and a barn, and the prior owners painted the house black. The barn was already red, and apparently that wasn't, they didn't apply for a permit to do that, so we're asking to, for you to approve the existing house being painted in black. And for us to paint the barn in the same color. That's, that's one. And the second is, we are, we have a permit to build a breezeway, a connector between the, the barn and the house. And we mistakenly believed that the architect had asked, as part of the permit to replace the roof. And unfortunately, that wasn't the case. The roof was replaced with a metal roof, and even to us, we were surprised at how shiny the roof was. And so are, we are proposing to paint the roof with a color of paint that would reduce the reflect, light reflectance value from approximately fifty, which is what the Galvalume LRV is. Down to sixteen, which is about the lowest one could get, LRV of sixteen. And we've provided color samples where we've painted the roof in the color to be proposed, and you should have those colors before you.
Somebody holding something?
Yes.
Yes. It looks almost black.
Correct, it's a very dark gray, and we understand that's consistent, or is consistent with the color patterns that, that are in the scenic overlay, that could be approved in the scenic overlay.
Green, is this something that you would take a look at? Check for the bit as far as, the idea of changing the roof, I don't know much about, I mean, we went through a little bit once before with another roof, but if you are familiar with it and could take a look, that's great.
Sure.
So Karina and Iver, the plan for these to do a site visit, so at some point, when Braden has five minutes, he's just gonna hop over and check it out. I don't typically schedule because everybody has full-time jobs for the most part on this, so at some point, Braden will just show up and just take a look, and then he's gonna report back to us at the beginning of September at our meeting. Or maybe we'll squeeze it in obviously.
Okay, would you need someone there to show the dark color?
No, because he has all the file, I'll make sure he has it when he goes.
Very good.
You just need to know that you might see his face on your camera outside of.
Okay, I'm sure we will.
Third person over, so thank you for coming and we'll be in touch, okay? They're just gonna take.
Thank you very much.
Where we can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next sketch plan review is Anthony Joseph Perry, which is the sketch plan review for a special use permit application for a short-term rental of a four-bedroom non-occupied dwelling in the R-three zoning district located at twenty-one Forest Wood Drive in Woodstock.
Same. Supposed to be the last one.
Supposed to be the last one.
Supposed to be the last one about four months ago.
Yeah.
Well, this is the last one on that town board list and there's no more in my office. If Judy would like a motion to approve the application pending draft resolution, I did not write that on the teaching.
I move approval of a resolution to permit a non-occupied S.T.R. Twenty-one Forest Wood Drive, S.U.P. twenty-three zero six eight three.
Second? James, you with me?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. All right, votes. Judy? Aye. It's a.
Go ahead, call for the vote.
Call for a question.
Jennifer? No. We're gonna fail, like, I can't, I can't even go any further.
What, what did she say?
She said no. Exactly what I, I, your, my hands are tied, everything that you've asked for is in these resolutions. The building department now has other things to do with them.
This is not you, this is not your preparation, this is the town board's lack of preparation regarding this subject that has brought us to the point where we, which normally don't sabotage and sink proposals, have to say no.
Okay, I guess I have to do the official vote and I don't know what to do.
Take it by name.
All right, I have somebody still need members of the vote, I know. This is literally, these cases came from William Spencer, who is doing them, I have no, these are, this is the town board list from April, this is the last one, just reiterating. There were lawyers involved, they were approved by the town board prior, all right, so the vote, I have Judy as an A, I have Jennifer as a no, Braden?
She said yes.
Yeah, which is A.
I said aye.
Yeah, yeah, I have that.
Oh, when you said.
Jennifer said no.
That's right, Jensen said no.
How many more do we have?
I have zero in my office, it's part of the town board.
Comment.
John.
We have had zero before, and always another one pops up.
Oh, there'll be more, there'll be transfers, there'll be new ones for this box, but then we can do a full regime.
No.
Okay, Peter?
No.
James?
Aye.
So I'm tied.
And a tie is a loss.
I just don't know what to do.
Well, because it's not your problem. This is the town board's creation and their problem.
Right.
Let them fix it.
Or they can go to the T.V.M.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on.
Okay, the next sketch plan review. Is William Schultz and planning board case twenty-one dash one-one-six-zero A. It's a weapons and water course permit number twenty-three dash zero five zero. This is the second sketch plan review of a subdivision and weapons water course permit application to subdivide a lot of fifteen-plus acres into two parcels of eight and six acres in the R-three zoning district located in New York State to two-on-two in Woodstock. And because of Conrad or the yap reference, and just for the board's sake, we reviewed this quite a while ago. Their entrance, their proposed entrance is going through the weapons, and we told them that they had already been not approved and that another entrance had been approved, so they're resubmitting. And this is a very nicely done application because they're keeping completely out of the weapons and the buffer completely.
I've got this mapped, if you want me to put it up.
So it's right here. So you'd like to tell the board? Tell the board what you're proposing.
Yes. My name is Katar, I'm an engineer with Cretorius and Conrad, this is our second submittal. And as I explained in the letter before, the first time we came in, we want, we tried to do a two-lot subdivision coming through Wardwell Lane, which we cross wetlands, we've been advised by the board to go back and exercise the option of trying to come in through an existing thirty-three-foot wide right-of-way that comes right off thirty-two. We went back and did that, took some time because we had to make sure that we can get septic for, you know, the second lot, which seemed to, you know, to, to be available. And this map represents basically a two-lot subdivision, one is approximately six-point-four acres and one is eight-point-eight acres with a shared drive that come in through that existing right-of-way to serve.
I didn't get that drawing. This is short, is right?
Yes.
I didn't get the drawing, okay, well, I've got it on my, I've got it on my G.I., J.S.
So what lines are shown, the heavy line is the hundred-foot buffer, as you can see, the proposed two houses, septic, basically everything is outside of that area. There's nothing much more than that, that, that we have here. Zoning is all compliant with it, it falls within the envelopes, it meets all the minimum zoning requirements when it comes to lot size and all setbacks.
So I have a question, Peter. Do they need the wetlands and water course now, or did they?
No, if they're not touching, if they're not touching the, if they're not touching the buffer.
I just want to make sure.
They don't need a permit.
Right, exactly.
That's the whole idea, that's why this is a great plan.
Yeah.
Completely avoids it in one.
Katar, thank you for working with us.
Good job.
Try the best and just, we want to talk for everybody, I mean.
Well, it's a good, it's a good plan, so I guess we'll set you up for a public hearing.
All right, Katar, I will, I'll email you and we'll schedule a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
This is Wardwell.
Yeah.
Thirty-two goes that way, and off thirty-two.
You're gonna do the.
We're gonna use the existing right-of-way to come into the property.
So what I've got up there on the, on the thing, it's that red on the lower left that's going up to everything.
Yeah.
And I, I never figured that my borders are exactly right or that the parcel is exactly located the way it said.
Sometimes they shift up a little bit.
All the time.
Yeah.
With lines going through houses. So if you've got a certified weather coordinator on this, then you're good to go.
It was done by. Okay.
Yes, you're right here. Um, one of the September meetings of the kin, we'll talk about it probably next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so our next sketch plan review is William Schultz, planning board case twenty-one dash eleven-six-zero A.
Oh, that's what we just did.
I'm sorry, the second one down. And Susan McClan, Whittington, in this planning board case twenty-three dash one-two-three-six. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision of two part lot, resulting in two new lots. Zero-point-seven-six acres and one-point-zero-six-six acres by transferring zero-point-zero-seven-six-four acres in the R-three zoning district located at thirty-four, thirty-six O'Hale Mountain Road in Woodstock.
And I'm gonna put that up for the public and anybody else that wants to look.
And.
That's the existing.
I've studied this and let me tell you, it's, it's one of these tiny, tiny, tiny lot line revisions that is less than a, less than a tenth of.
Yeah, point zero seven.
And it only affects the two properties around it and it doesn't affect any of the other properties.
Yeah, it's not even boring for anyone to see.
Let him be.
Please tell the board why and what you're doing, but I can see that it's.
Can I see?
Sure. It's the prohesiveness of it now. It's kind of a unused piece of land because it's hidden from the other structures right next to mine. So it's.
Yeah.
I've made gardens out of virtually everywhere on the property. This we want to turn into pretty much of a natural habitat garden. So it blends with everything else. That's basically it. I mean, this land is not that big. It's permanent, you know, to be there. And also the point behind it is we got a lawyer involved to make a purchase for this piece of property so that it's been in the family almost a hundred years, the whole property. And that's my aunt back there. The idea is that she could then, after the purchase of this land through the lawyer, she could make some improvements on her house and that was the deal we made.
Fantastic. Well, like I said, it's, I think we can wait for the review because it does not affect any other landlord.
Move towards.
So if the board sees it that way.
Move it.
All right.
Hi.
Moves to wait for a review.
Brooks, at the next meeting, I will have a draft resolution prepared that the board will approve because, and you do not have to have a public hearing or meet with the board again.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's, it's just paperwork at this point. And then they will, once we get all there, which there's a few things that have to be done, but it's all paperwork, just us. Bill will file with the county.
Can I just tell you something? I've been in meetings for thirty-two years. It's quick and bad for this to come up. You guys are like on top of it. That's like it's still getting on the feed and dogs. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Katar, thank you. How about you calling my name?
We did El Peri and Gate, right? We don't, I don't have to keep that.
We did one.
El Peri and Gate. Didn't we just do that?
Who does you tell me?
I don't know.
That was a remedy violation with the.
We did that.
We did that.
Yes, so they're coming back.
Yes. Oh, they are?
Yeah, I'm going to look at it.
Sorry, okay, I'll forget it.
Scarborough too.
Yep.
Yes, they are.
Okay, so.
I haven't seen the two of you in a while.
How you doing?
All right.
I think you guys have not a clear room.
I know, right? Good to be here.
Hi.
Okay, so our next sketch plan review is David and Natalie Scarborough, special use permit number 23-0465A. This is a sketch plan review with special use permit application to modify an existing special use permit seventeen-04655 to add to an allowed representative located at 59 Rock City Road.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
I was trying.
To add an allowed representative.
That's how the CEO wrote it, yes.
So we are here to learn the process of our, we are, we love our business, we love our building. But if we want to sell our building and transfer our permit, we don't know the process. We assume this is the correct process.
We operate a hotel.
Yes, we have.
For existing equity that they have.
We're not changing anything. We just want to know that if, if a deal is going to go through and we can sell our building, that the person that buys it can do what I do, identical, with no changes whatsoever. And there's no way to learn that process without meeting you guys in person.
Well, the SUP goes with the land.
So what the, what the, what the CEO is kind of requesting is their names are on it. So what we're going to do is it'll be their names and then we'll add the potential buyer. So then there's no question. So yes, it goes with the land exactly. But we're going to adjust the SUP if you guys are okay with it and just have a name.
Why are their names on it?
It's, that's how it's always been.
It says forever. What does it say on there?
Indefinitely.
In debt, valid indefinitely.
But there's names on the top.
But it has our names. So we listed this thing since December thinking valid indefinitely, goes with the land.
It does.
And we didn't think there was a reason to come here. But when it came time for us to work with someone who really wants it, he reached out to Butch. Butch needs confidence from the planning board. I'm just speaking because that's what I know he wants. And, and that's the way it came down, being that our names are on it. Plus, even my real estate attorney said, David, your names are on this. And he's not a Woodstock guy, but he, you know. And so we're like, let's go planning board, let's confirm this detail because we're going to get further and someone's going to want to buy it for sure. This guy's on the fence. And I just want to be super confident and correct when we're listing. And to hear that it goes with the property is, as a fact, is where we were. But I want Butch as confident because the next person doing what we're doing, Butch needs to be on the same page with that person.
So you're not trying to do it today. You're just trying to make sure how to do it one time.
No, they, they want it today. They want the name.
With the person who may or may not.
Then, then he'll figure it out after.
That's right. The question is, if this guy decides to pull out of the deal, we will have to come back and put a different name on it.
That's why it was coined as allowed representative.
Because there's.
But there's nothing he can do to act on it until he actually owns the property.
That's, well, that's, that's the way I look at it.
Yes, yes, because it goes with the parcel.
Those are the, there's nothing on the planning board. The only thing, the building department is, is the only one that can issue any citation or any sort of.
And.
All right, so as your admin, planning board, do you want me to reissue the SUP, which I've done for, for various things, change, when it changes hands, change names, I can do that. Or I can write a letter and just say it goes indefinitely with the land.
I would take it because if that person isn't going to be the person, it might be another person.
So a letter indefinitely with the land?
Right.
Okay, doesn't need a name change indefinitely with the land.
And you send that to Butch and Pete.
Yep, and then we're done.
Why are people's names on them to begin with?
John, I follow suit.
When we got it, it was real cool. But seven years later, I was like, well, it doesn't need to be on there.
Exactly, it doesn't. Well, it does have to be addressed to someone. I mean, who was responsible? I mean, on the file, your name is. You might have slipped through a lot when you came here for that hotel. I spent a few hours flipping through all that stuff.
Well, we're on the same page now.
So I will prepare a letter for them to approve at the next meeting and we'll talk.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you.
You are. This one I can delete.
Yes.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Thank you.
And then we have fam acres who are asking for an extension.
I can just piggyback on that. We're down to one item. It's just John needs to, they went back twice. This is the second time with the HOI lawyer and he, she, he just wanted some fine tuning. So literally, and John last night on the phone, I know I owe you this. He's so busy right now. So it's just one thing, everything else is in. So it's just an extension to say, yeah, yeah. So that's it.
That's probably the most complicated part of this whole thing.
I know.
Managing the open land.
The, you know, the point about SUP going with the land.
Oh, yeah.
Is that it is the problem with this whole non-owner occupied housing. It should not have gone with the land. It should have been to that owner.
So that's why I kind of like the name on it because then we have a little bit more power.
But it doesn't. It goes with the land.
I know, but.
But for short-term rentals, that's a matter of how the town defines.
It's true.
Right, doesn't have to go with the land.
You know, I was trying to think like, should I take the names on? But it's issued to a person comes here representing that land. So the name kind of has to be on it.
Right, but there's nothing we can do about it. The next person gets it.
The name is representative.
With an STR. All right, so. Does it have to go with the land for an STR or is that a matter of what the town?
No, it's the same. It's an SUP.
An SUP.
Yep.
But the permit isn't an SUP.
No, I need a motion for fam acre's extension.
I moved, we approved the extension, the request for extension for subdivision and approval and filing of maps for fam acres PB 21-1226 and wetlands and water course P 21045. So I have a second.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Hi. I'm.
All right.
Perfect.
So this lead agency request, as I said, is from the DEP. They're gonna be buying twenty-three thousand acres or something, thing. Twenty-eight million dollars delivered, all over two counties. Some in Woodstock.
Obviously, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, we would call someone in Woodstock.
So what they're asking is, what they're asking is if we're okay with them being the lead agency. Obviously, we don't want to be.
Is the land, is the land in Ulster County or Delaware County?
Some.
No, it's coming out of the office of Delaware County. It's in Ulster County.
Okay.
And there might be some in.
There may be some in Woodstock.
Yes, Peter, yes.
And they're not paying very much for the land, you. Why?
Twenty-three thousand acres? Huh? Twenty-three thousand acres?
Yeah.
That's how much?
They're protecting our environment.
So from what Peter says, I think we have no objection.
No objection.
I will return the thing.
Oh, my gosh, can you imagine having to sit through all those?
No.
Okay, so unfinished business. We have a discussion of a site visit for McKee and Maggot, which I believe Grayden.
And Jennifer.
And Jennifer went to. So tell us what you discovered.
What'd you find? It seems applicable.
What did you see?
Well, they have a, they have a spa. It's an indoor pool and, you know, some spa facilities. And then they have two short-term rentals. So maybe that, it's a, it's a bed and breakfast.
It's a bed and breakfast.
It's a bed and breakfast, not a short-term rental.
Yeah.
And, yes.
Important.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. And there were questions about parking and there's plenty of room for parking.
Lighting?
This is my.
Yep.
Okay.
They've had a rough go of it. They've had several violations and stuff. One, one had to do with a pool because to have a pool, public requires board health approval.
They didn't have that when they built it, yeah.
They, they, they wanted it to be a public pool, right?
But you have to get board health approval or something.
They were living on the works for fifty years. And I know of, I mean, if it's going to be used by the public, the board of health must approve it, period.
Yeah.
And the public is the guests. It isn't everybody in town.
No.
It's just the guests. But that's public, as opposed to family.
So Jennifer, you've compared it all. Seems good?
Yes.
And you're not a lawyer, but you're playing lawyer with me.
No, I'm just asking a question. I think I'm right about that. I just want to be sure.
So, but they, you have, of course you want a public hearing. You're gonna have to have a public hearing.
That was, yep, yep, I just, where are we going? Absolutely. This is literally, we're changing, it was multi-dwelling to mixed use. That, that's what, your planning board were going multi-dwelling to mixed use.
They want to get.
Yes, public hearing? Or Leslie Cross? Yes.
Could be a rough public hearing, I'm gonna tell you.
Some of the neighbors are not.
Planning board were there. We can, we can, we can move to a public hearing, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, hi.
So the next thing is a motion to return the performance bond for a completed site visit for Palestine, which was the planting of the trees that you actually.
I went, yep.
Everything, I saw the pictures you took. Happy road.
Dustin Wilber did a great job, I think. But we, we, you know, we jumped in, we, we worry, we, you know, they came in and were very ready to remedy. And, you know, they felt they were taken by the people they hired to do work for them, which usually happens. Yeah, so I just need to, it's done. We need to return from, so.
Return the.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
We changed something. I'm sorry, just take your mind. I realize not related to this case at all. Where are we on the other mountain side issue with the roof and the trees?
As far as I know, they don't have a CEO.
Still in court.
No, they, we won.
They lost.
Did they appeal again?
Huh?
I think they appealed again.
Did they appeal again? But they're gonna, they're gonna lose no matter what, so.
But I, I don't know. But I, that, yeah, we won and then I think they.
You know, it's. He doesn't have a CEO and it's a multimillion-dollar prop home.
Yeah.
And unlike these guys that want to fix the roof that you're gonna go look at, that was a stainless steel roof with a special coating that you couldn't treat with anything, anything to change it. So I don't know, I mean, other than replacing the whole roof. And it's not just the roof. It's a stainless steel roof with all the trim and all the house and all the. All the decks is that same stainless steel. So.
Chase. That's by a layer studio, right? Blenker.
It's way on top of the, very top of the mountain of the Karen's Mountain, I call it.
Yeah, take care of that, yeah.
And I did a job, a survey job off of Wittenburg Road in the house that we were surveying. I could see that thing was just blinding. It was just as.
When the sun hits it, it's incredible.
Yeah.
It was amazing. Anyway. So that's, I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna do.
So these guys did it right and we agreed. And the next one is the motion to approve draft resolutions for Keith. Say to Keith at Fairbanks and Goodman and Luna Trust to approve the draft resolutions.
Yes. Second? Hi.
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 All in favor? Okay, so now we have a discussion and motion on JK revision of the memo for the HOF clarification.
Let me explain. I had trouble understanding that memo when I looked at it. And Bill reached out and said, I don't know what this says. And I had already because I didn't understand it. Tried to understand it, talked to Melissa, reword it. So I would like that revision that you guys got to go to the people who received the original one so that they know what it is we are proposing.
Sound logical?
Yeah. Fine.
Okay, so I will, I will email that tonight.
Thank you.
To the complete list.
Yep. And that is the list, that is the wording on which the HOF is going to respond. And let me say something, just to highlight on this. Anybody who tells you that the public did not have input to the HOF, I would like to take and hang. Because we are spending hours and hours and hours going through every comment we got and writing responses. Now, sometimes it's the same question, so it's the same response. But Jeff Collins and Deborah Duan and I have put serious time in and we have changed things. One of the things we got from a lot of people was they didn't think key in lieu of affordable housing should go forward because people would just pay the fee. And so we took it out. Good. And that's the kind of saying, that is why we are asking for input. Because we want this to be what people need and want.
So Judy, on that subject, because it's in that subject.
Yeah.
Has to do with what we're gonna be dealing with, which is a conservation subdivision. And the applicants brought up a code, which I, in all the years here, have never heard of. And it's Article 278, state code authorizing the town to be able to make a conservation subdivision, in other words, taking off, out of land, out of a property that needs to be preserved, wetlands, whatever. And with the rest of it, you can make smaller lots than the, than the existing code.
Yes, and that was already in our code as well, permitting cluster house.
So one of the things in that code says that the town board has to approve for a conservation subdivision. And I did some search and I sent it to everybody, but the town.
That's in the state code?
Yeah, the town, the town of, whatever it was, has.
Kusaki?
Yeah, Kusaki has a conservation subdivision code. Yeah, Kusaki has a conservation subdivision code. And so what that means is their town board approves the planning board to be able to do conservation subdivisions, which we don't have at this point.
But if we pass the new code, we'll have it.
Yeah, if you look at the Kusaki one as an example, that's, that's how it works.
If we pass what is in front of us from the housing outside test course, we will have not only the ability required, but it's going to be the requirement.
And.
If it's a five or larger subdivision, it has to be a conservation subdivision.
Well, and the, the issue about the two seventy-eight is, and the reason I like it, is that, um, there's no limit to the size of the land involved.
You mean it could be smaller?
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't have to be a major subdivision, which is five lots. It doesn't have to be any particular size. And the reason I like that because there are properties that are twenty acres, fifteen acres, that have wetlands and stuff that that could apply to. If we as a board can say, well, now we'll give you two one acre lots and this one big lot.
Well, there's, there's another issue too, which I think you and I have a little bit of back and forth about. And that's the net, the net buildable acreage.
Right.
In the proposed code, you subtract from the available acreage.
Yeah.
Steep slopes and wetlands and their buffers. And then whatever remaining acreage is left, that's the basis on which the summing is done.
But that's not how two seventy-eight works. What two seventy-eight is saying is you, if you have a piece of property in, in the zone, the amount of, the amount of lots you can be permitted presently in that zone, you can still have left after you take out the conservation area.
We're talking about two different things.
No, you're saying that you take out the conservation area and then you, what's left is what you have to apply.
That's a different provision in the proposed code.
Okay, but that's, that's the difference.
Before we close out, Anthony Perry is online and has patiently waited and has asked to speak. So I think we should let him talk because he didn't get to say anything. This is the town board for short-term rental that you guys did not. Anthony, the board is going to listen to you. Hi.
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for letting me speak. I really appreciate it. You know, I, I didn't really believe that there, it, it, it would have been denied, but I just wanted to quickly speak and kind of give everyone an idea of like how we use the house and what, what my intentions are. So, you know, in, in, in twenty eighteen, we bought the house from the original owner. And I actually became friends with their daughter, Renee Pesci. We, we've let her stay in the house a couple of times. You know, I, I later found out that the original owner of the house worked at IBM Endicott with my father. So we had this kind of interesting connection to the house, which was, you know, pretty heartwarming and, um, you know, since twenty eighteen, you know, we've, we've really made a pretty meaningful commitment to, to Woodstock. We spend about ninety days a year at the house. You know, the, the house will pass to my children who are now eight and ten in the event of my death. We expect to own the house. You know, I'm forty-eight. I expect to own the house until I, until I'm dead, literally. You know, we, we rent the house almost exclusively for a minimum of thirty days to families, um, you know, from all areas of the northeast. Even including Chicago, we had some teachers during COVID who were homeschooling their children. And, you know, I, I just want to emphasize that, you know, we're, we're committed to the community. You know, my, my family and I volunteer, you know, even at the hands of some, some pretty drastic racism during COVID. Um, you know, my wife is Chinese, my children are mixed race. You know, my wife was spit on in front of CVS one day. We've had people tell my children, go back to your, you know, country, stuff like that. And you know, even in spite of that, we've, we've remained committed to Woodstock. We expect to own the house, you know, like I mentioned. And, you know, again, the whole short-term rental thing for us is, is just really meant to, you know, basically, you know, build savings accounts for my children's college and, and things like that. I mean, a majority of, of what we get from the house goes back into it, whether it's, you know, painting the exterior or, you know, recoding the driveway. You know, we're going to be up there in October building a treehouse for my kids, like, you know, we really want to be part of the community. And, you know, so like that being said, I, I, I really don't think that, you know, our property kind of falls into the, the stereotypical like, you know, cash grabbing type of cliche that STRs in Ulster County have kind of become synonymous with. And so, you know, I don't know if there's a process for reconsideration. Uh, you know, we've, you know, I spearheaded a group a couple of years ago, worked with, you know, the, the, the other committees and the boards, um, you know, to get, to have those original thirteen properties on, on the resolution that we, that we worked really hard to, to move, you know, move towards that resolution. And, you know, as, as being the last one of the thirteen with the other twelve having been approved, you know, I don't know if this is the proper process, but I, I would ask that our, our permit application be reconsidered. And if there's any additional information that, um, this committee needs to, to make their decision, I'm, I'm happy to provide it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I'll be up there on Monday for two weeks if anyone would like to discuss it in person. But, but yeah, I just, um, you know, this is like gut-wrenching and heartbreaking that, that this wasn't approved. So, yeah. Melissa, thank you for facilitating this and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
All right, great, great interview. Um, please understand, sir, this is nothing personal. The planning board agreed to a certain number of these units and the town has gone over it and we are maintaining our position that we stuck with the original amount. And that's where the planning board stands. Done?
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
During your presentation, that you don't rent for less than thirty days. Is that what I understood?
Well, so I mean, without the permit, we're not allowed to rent for thirty days. So we.
I mean, let's just forget about current usage. Let's talk about current usage.
Yeah.
Current way in which you are using the property. What is your average rental?
You mean length of time?
Length of time.
Length of time, okay. What's your average length of time?
For a rent.
Over the last two years, it's, it's more than thirty days because we haven't had a permit to rent for less than thirty days. So the.
They're obligated by the law that's in place and they're asking, they were in this lump because they're asking to be able to rent for under thirty days. Yeah, they want to do short-term rentals, two nights, three nights. Yes. They don't have.
But you can still rent thirty days or more.
Yes. They can rent thirty days or more.
So like, to give you, so to, to give the committee a, an example, we rent to the same family. We've done it three years and, uh, in a row and we just booked for next year. It's a, um, family that homeschools their children. They, they rent the house from just after, they, they basically come in in between Christmas and New Year's and then stay until early March. So we have a ninety-day rental over the winter. Um, it'll be four years running. You know, we, you know, we employ, um, a local property manager. And, uh, yeah, so I mean, over the last two years, the, the average rental is absolutely more than thirty days. Our intent is to be able to keep the house. You know, I'm, I'm in, by no means in a position to keep this house without having some rental income from it, but the.
Which is the sole reason that they approved of the town board and got on this list.
Well, you, you, you can certainly go to the ZBA and with everything you've just told us, I don't doubt the ZBA might give you approval, but that will come from the ZBA and not the planning board because the planning board has said no to any more non-owner occupied permits.
That's the zoning board of appeals.
Which you were free to apply to.
And you'll probably get, you'll probably get permitted from that.
Anthony, I'll, I'll talk to, we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll get you in touch with the ZBA, okay?
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, next meeting's a workshop.
Oh, yeah.
And we're happy stuff. We're going to do a webinar on conservation subdivision that I've already watched that our lovely, our own lovely, lovely John Lyons and Ted did with Eva Kepel. So we're going to watch that and we're going to talk about it. And then you're going to be continuing at press.
So our next workshop will be.
August thirty-first.
Okay, motion, unless anyone has any other questions.
Well, I just have a little information. I'm going to be, uh, in Iceland from the twenty-fourth of September to the second of October.
They had a new volcano a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, well.
Check that out. Yeah, my daughter, my son were over there a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I hear it's great. And they added a few days and then they sent me a note and they said, are you interested in a, going out at night to a dark place so you can see the aurora? And I said, you mentioned that. That's one of the reasons I'm going.
You know, that's not guaranteed.
Well, I know it's not guaranteed, but I discovered after I'd signed up for the trip that most of it is at the full moon. So the days that they added give us half moon and that we will be dark enough for the weather cooperating.
All right, Peter made a motion to end, so who seconds?
My second.
Thank you. Everybody else? Hi.
Hi.
Hi.